Party started. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the St. Lucy County Planning and Zoning Commission, September fifteenth. If all would please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your mercy and your grace.
Amen. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Marty Sanders. Mr. Benner.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lowes. Mr. Bridgers.
He hasn't excused.
Ms. Slack.
Here, ma'am.
Mr. Munt.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Lowe.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor.
Here, ma'am.
All right, we have any announcements or disclosures by any board members at this time?
I met with Mr. Carville on the menu, first one coming up, I believe, on the North Hutchinson Island.
Okay. Item nine B.
Mr. Chairman, I spoke with staff regarding the second item, this evening, B, and then also had some calls from the public.
Okay. All right, moving on to the minutes of the August eighteenth meeting. If there's any additions or deletions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Ms. Slack? A motion? Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Slack. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, like Commissioner Low. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to item eight, public comment. If there's any member of the public that wishes to address the board on any non-agenda items, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment section, and we'll go ahead and move on to our first public hearing, Barron Midway and US One Storage Facility. We have Mr. Curry with his staff presentation.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. For the record, I hear Curry, Planning and Development Services Department. Agenda item nine A is a conditional use petition for Barron Midway and US Highway Storage Facility to allow for a self-storage located north of Midway Row and east of US Highway One. In accordance with public notice, Section eleven oh 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 three, notices mailed out to forty-nine adjacent property owners, a legal ad in a local newspaper on September second, two thousand and twenty-two. This and the sign placed on the petition site. Proof of advertising is within the agenda packet. This is the area showing the subject property outlined in red. The four-point-four-zero acre site is located north of Midway Row and east of US Highway One. The property is zone commercial general and has a future land use of commercial, persistent to the Land Development Code, Section three oh one oh three, S seven G. Household goods and warehouses, many storages are listed as a conditional use within the commercial general zoning district. Here's a snapshot of the site plan. The site plan will include one access off of US Highway One. The self-storages will total one hundred four thousand seven hundred seventy-one square feet, a three-story building, and four single-story storage buildings. Ten RV and boat storage parking spaces in the rear, and gated access into the self-storage facility. Here are elevations of the buildings, showing south, north, and also facing US Highway One. The elevations must comply with the Commercial General Zoning District for the architecture elevations, which is Section ten twenty-four. So, we reviewed that, and they comply with the architectural features, which has at least six, such as display windows, the colors, and also stone and stamped concrete pavement. Mail-out notices were sent out to forty-nine property owners. The planning department did receive one response, not in favor, which is located at three eight two Basinger Avenue. This petition conforms to the standards of review as set forth in St. Lucy County Land Development Code, Section eleven oh seven oh three, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucy County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission forward this petition to the Board of County Commissioners rec- recommendation of approval, subject to the following conditions. A ground and wall sign must be submitted to the planning department for review and approval. A site development permit is required prior to performance of site improvements and activities, prior to the major site plan approval, a finalized tree mitigation plan, and a finalized landscape plan. A go-forward code survey shall be required. All category invasive species and plants shall be eradicated from the site, and written record responses with the State's Division of Historical Resources shall be secured prior to removing and relocating of the headstones. This concludes staff presentation. I believe the applicant does have a presentation of their own.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Alejandro Toro with Engineering Design and Construction. On behalf of the applicant, I am here with Mr. Todd Maury from Redtail to help me do the presentation. Thank you. Staff did a great job at presenting the application for the conditional use.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. On behalf of Redtail, as well as Barron Development, we are pleased to be able to present you this simple, short presentation. This should be very straightforward. I know that Tahir and the staff have worked very diligently on trying to address a lot of matters. We're already fairly well, almost complete with the actual site plan review process as well. This is just, though, for the conditional use. So, I try and mention that because sometimes we're here before you related to a site plan issue, and other times we're here for condition use, and that's what we're here actually for tonight. So, with that, just going to run through the presentation real quickly. Tahir will be able to move the slides as we go. Again, you can see the site. This is just north of the Wendy's. So, if you can think about there, Midway Road and US One, this is on the east side, just north of the convenience store and the Wendy's. You can get a feel for that as we move forward to the next slide. What we have here is just a little bit of the overview. It gives you a sense for the area across the street. You know, you can just think about that area where you have the car dealerships going on. You have anchored on the northwest corner of the intersection, you have both another convenience store, Burger King, you have the shopping plaza. If you're ever going over to get Joy's Ice Cream, I mean, it's a great spot to go. But those are the uses that you're seeing in that area. Next. For the future use and the zoning for it, I wanted you to make sure you could see that this area really is all set. It's been established for a long time with commercial general uses in that area. This vacant site is one that has sort of been sitting, ready, waiting for something to come along. This particular use, which is so nice about it, is that it's what's considered a low-intensity use, does not generate much traffic. Many people that actually will have a use like this, they're often visiting their facility maybe once a month, if not once a year. So, it generally is, again, is one that has a very low impact for that. Next slide. For this, Tahir already mentioned the site plan. You can see it's a series of five buildings, and with those five buildings, the one up front is the three-story Keystone Building when you first enter the project. We worked diligently with staff as well, and Alejandro from EDC. This is one where sometimes you'll get the engineer, and they've had CAD techs work on it. Alejandro was actually physically drawn this project, put a lot of his own time and effort as well, made sure that he addressed staff comments. So, he sort of did a dual role on this particular one. One of the only things that really came out of this was just making sure we had good adequate circulation, making sure we addressed things such as turnaround movements when you enter the site. Whenever you have a gated area, you have to make sure you have a bypass and those things that are in place. This has ten parking spaces up on the front, the west side. It has ten spots in the back that can be for larger vehicle storage there. And then, we had to relocate as well the lift station. We pushed that to the north end of the site, just to really help out with site visibility, to make sure that the architecture popped and stood out really well. The landscaping is virtually complete. There were a couple of comments we had from staff, so we're working through those items as well at this point. Next one. You can see the architecture, and we'll go through a couple of these. I wanted to get to the three-D slides, so you can better see what's happening on that. So, for the -- keep going, a few more. Keep going. This gives you the full size. You can see for each of those five buildings. This gives you a good feel of the site, and you can see, again, coming in, we tried to use really nice, solid colors that really helped accentuate the site and made it feel like it was, again, a nice -- had just a nice warm presence for that area. The next one, so we'll give you another one for that. There you go. Nice, nice job on architecture. Spent a lot of time working with the team to make sure that we had a bunch of articulation in the building, that the building had what we call movement, and it had the colors that also really helped accentuate that. Went back and forth and back and forth, and a lot of this, we found something that really seemed to fit well. So, thank you. Next. Sort of as a recap on this, we're, again, looking at something that's supposed to be set up as a neighborhood use. You may recall about four years ago, we came before you and actually amended, adding this particular use in the commercial neighborhood district as well, because it is considered a use that sort of captures trips locally. So, you want to try and have these in locations where people aren't having to drive a long distance to be able to try and get to a self-storage facility. This is one as well that is set up as practical for the neighborhood. It's safe, clean. This is one that it has onsite management. There's about a one-thousand-square-foot office space inside the building there on that three-story use. It is a fully secure facility. Took a lot of time to also make sure that site lighting was not going to be a problem for anybody nearby. It's a heavily wooded area, so it's nice that not only are we able to work with our existing landscaping, but to try and capture some of the existing trees and then the surrounding area to the east. There are a couple of residential lots that haven't been developed, but even for those that are further to the east, there still is a lot of vegetation that's in place. And when I say a lot, it's almost about three-hundred feet of vegetation that separates the closest home to the property line itself. From there, also, this is one that's set up where it's not set for commercial uses. This is not for people to run their business out of. It truly is set up as a self-storage facility. With that, be glad to answer any questions that you may have for Alejandro or for myself.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions from the board for the applicant?
A question.
Mr. Low?
Uh, tell me about the RV parking.
So...
They're gonna be parking for vacant parking.
Yeah, this has, on the eastern side of the site, if we'll pull up the site plan, you can see, those are those long spaces that are set up on the far east side. Do you see that? Those are open surface lot spaces.
Isn't that a separate zoning for outside storage of vehicles and...
It's still within the same zoning, commercial general, for boats, RVs, storage.
Okay. Mr. Slack?
What has your research determined with respect to the headstones?
Boy, I'm glad you asked that. This was such an interesting project. When we first got involved, for those that may not have seen it in the detail, we were onsite. We were having all of our environmental performed. We went through and had, you know, everything from our boundary surveys, topographic surveys. We started our environmental, and all of us, lo and behold, we found some tombstones. We thought, oh, my goodness, we've found an old cemetery. Thought, please, tell me that isn't the case. But there's an area monument company that was actually dumping and discarding their used monument stones on the actual site. We had gone so far as physically taking the names that were on there, and we were having historical research performed to try and determine where these stones, which family they may have belonged to, and have seen what was happening. Fortunately, we found out that these were all discarded headstones, that none of them belonged to a family or to a plot. They weren't something that we had. There were no bodies present, so that was definitely not the case. But regardless, I mean, had it been, we wanted to make sure that we did everything appropriately and worked with staff as well to make sure that was fully accomplished. So, thank you for your question.
Yeah, I reached out to a family member of a longstanding White City family that has a lot of history in the area, and who's also involved with the White City Cemetery. And they thought that this was related to that particular proprietor, but weren't sure exactly what the history was. So, it's good to have a little bit more background.
It was. We had to do a lengthy research project into this. It was really one at first. It was like a hard gulp, like, oh, my goodness, I can't believe this has happened. I had a really weird situation happen years ago, where we were actually doing one and came across a Jewish cemetery. We ended up having to get involved, and we actually went through the entire process where we actually did find that it was an actual cemetery, and every single body was exhumed, and then we actually transported to Israel every single body, and it had to have a rabbi on board. And it was, like, it was a beautiful process, but it took almost two and a half years to go through that entire process to have that accomplished. So, I was having flashbacks when I first, you know, realized that there were tombstones on the site, so...
Mr. Munt?
Mr. Maury, there was one letter of objection. Did either you or the applicant reach out to the objector and try to assage their concern?
I actually wasn't aware of that until this evening, so...
Yeah, that came in, I think, a couple of days ago, which it didn't state any, have a letter actually stating why they were objecting to the site plan, but it was just a notice.
Was that forwarded to the applicant?
I'm sorry?
Was that letter that came back forwarded to the applicant?
You mean, okay, no, it was not.
So, the applicant wasn't aware of an objection?
That's correct.
That's not very good. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board at this time? Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, both. Appreciate it.
All right, this is a public hearing. If there's any member of the public that wishes to address the board on this item, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for further discussion and/or a motion to approve. We have a motion, Commissioner Munt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Benner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lowes?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Munt?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Lowe?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Thank you, Barron Development. Forward that on to the Board of County Commissioners. And we'll move on to item nine B, South Orchid Island's request to amend the official zoning atlas from commercial neighborhood to the HIRD Hutchinson Island Residential District. And we have Ms. Jody with a presentation. And just a quick bit of, I guess, bittersweet news. The wonderful Jody is leaving us. This will be her last planning and zoning meeting, but she's moving on to bigger and better things. So, we're happy for her, but we're gonna miss you.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Jody Kugler, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. Tonight, I will be presenting Agenda item nine B for the rezone petition for South Orchid Island, located at five one four zero North Highway One, A one A, in Fort Pierce. This site is formerly known as the PV Martin Restaurant Site. In accordance to the public notice requirements outlined in Section eleven point zero zero point zero three of the St. Lucy County Land Development Code, public notice was advertised in the St. Lucy County News Tribune on September fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Notices were mailed to two hundred and twenty-five surrounding property owners located within five-hundred-foot radius of the subject property, and a sign was posted on the property. The three-point-five-three-acre project site is situated on the east side of North A one A. To the west is an existing trailer, travel trailer park. To the north and northwest is a multifamily residential use, and to the south and southwest is a multifamily residential use. The subject parcel is the properties... The subject parcel and the properties situated to the north, south, east, and west are designated by the residential high future land use. The current zoning of the parcel is zone commercial neighborhood, and the properties to the north and south are zone commercial neighborhood. The parcel to the west is zone Hutchinson Island Residential District, and to the east is the Atlantic Ocean. The petition seeks to rezone the subject parcel from commercial neighborhood to the Hutchinson Island Residential District. In accordance with the St. Lucy County Land Development Code, Section four-point-zero-one point zero three, the subject property is located within the North Hutchinson Island Zone B height zone. Per Section four-point-zero-one point zero four B, Hutchinson Island Zone B has a maximum height, shall not exceed thirty-five feet. The proposed rezoning will not amend the maximum overall height requirement. Mail-out notices were sent to two hundred and twenty-five property owners within five-hundred feet of the subject site. The planning department received two letters of objections from property owners located within the five-hundred-foot radius of the subject site, and five letters of objection and two with no opinions outside of the five-hundred-foot radius as indicated by the red dots on the map above. This petition conforms to the standards of review as set forth in St. Lucy County Land Development Code, Section eleven point zero six point zero three, and is consistent with the St. Lucy County Comprehensive Plan goals, objectives, and policies. Staff recommends that this petition be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant and the staff are available to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Jody. Do you have a presentation or just your questions?
Just words.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the record, my name is Dennis Murphy. I'm from Culpeper Interpreting here in Fort Pierce, and we're here tonight representing Orchid Island LLC, the owners of the petition property in front of you. Jody's presentation to you is pretty much directly on point. This is a rezoning request, simply to change it from a commercial neighborhood designation to the primary designation applicable to Hutchinson Island, the Hutchinson Island Residential District. That will afford us an opportunity in the future to make a residential use of the property, which is currently not available under the CN zoning district right now. We are not seeking a land use plan change. We are working under the current land use plan designation, and assuming that the county commissioners ultimately would approve our change in zoning, we will be pursuing a development plan consistent with county codes and standards. Couple of points just to reinforce. Our petitions do not include any change to the building height code. We are not proposing any changes in height. There has been discussion about that in the past, but not as it applies to this particular property right now. You may remember that this property was approximately twenty years ago, the old PV Martin site, or a portion of it. When you go back and look at some of the maps on there, you'll see there's actually a little bit of commercial neighborhood north, a commercial neighborhood property north of ours. That property was sold and acquired by the, or sold to and acquired by the Ocean Harbor North Property Owners Association several years ago, and added into their oceanfront parcel as well. We have roughly the remaining, and I'm ballparking it, roughly two-thirds of the site left. So, that gives us an opportunity then to come back in with a development plan at some point in the future. Like I said earlier, we would respectfully request that this commission forward a recommendation to the county commission for approval. We would ask that our comments and that the official record be made part of any transmittal to the commission, and if you have any particular questions, I'm here to try to answer them. I'm going to guess, by the number of folks in the room tonight, there may be some questions from the public, and I will be available to answer any questions that come up as a part of that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Are there any questions of the applicant or staff at this time? Mr. Slack?
Just in looking at your boundary and topo, I'm looking at where the triple CLs are, and there doesn't seem to be much property westward of the old triple CL, between that and the property line. Is there precedent from the location of the prior building that gives you more buildable area on this site?
Yes. Well, this coastal control line in this particular part of the county is almost co-terminant with A one A, if not in A one A.
Right.
There are obvious precedent actions for building seaward of the CCL line, subject to meeting DEP standards. When we go through our follow-up development review work with the county and with the state, we will make all appropriate applications. Obviously, every application for works seaward of the CCL requires individual review by DEP. There are very strict standards on which to follow and comply with. I actually have two projects that are working their way through DEP right now, different locations, going through that, and we will make sure that whatever comes out of the building height requirements, minimum elevation is when I say building height, and/or foundation requirements, those will be met. But we believe that we can fit some things in here.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Dobbins, what is the height restriction there in that particular area?
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay. And how about the first finished floor?
It's going to vary. It's in part back to this CCL location. The general, and this is a ballpark number, okay, because every site's gonna be different, and we have not made specific application to DEP. Generally, in this part of the county, I believe the lowest member number is somewhere around the fifteen-foot range, give or take a little bit. So, that's where we are required by DEP to, the state of Florida, to be, have our lowest member somewhere in that number. That number will get more precision to it when we make official application, and they do, they being DEP, does their math and figures out that's as low as you can go.
Okay. Also, is this in any type of an erosion control zone?
I believe are part of the overall erosion district of the county, but in terms of any erosion control zone, I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for.
As far as any type of management in the event of a storm, you know, remove a major portion of this property?
We are not a part of, and nor am I aware of there being anything up on North Hutch regarding beach renourishment program areas.
Right, that's what I was asking.
Okay. No, we are not in any particular beach renourishment programmed area, and in the case of North Hutch, I'm not aware of there being any up there. Most of the ones in the county I'm aware of are down on South Hutch. And in fact, I can tell you that over the years, we've done a number of surveys on this particular property for various design concepts and so forth, and what we have been seeing is an actual accretion of beach in... in this area over the last several years. So this is one of the areas where I guess we're benefiting from renourishment projects to our north that kind of work their way south.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Munt?
Mr. Murphy, this particular site, I believe, is part of the dune preservation zone?
I'm sure that there are portions of the property that will be designated that when we complete our environmental assessment, yes.
I understand that. And then if you take away the dune preservation zone area, there's a statement in the Land Development Code that says residential densities that can be clustered to uplands located on the parcel proposed for development. So that is the permitted use.
Correct.
And dependent on how much of the dune preservation zone was that site occupied, you have to build on the uplands portion that's there. And I'm curious if you've had a survey or if the county staff has worked the property and we have any idea of how much uplands there is on this site?
I'll start with that one and then I'll let county staff apply to that one. Over the years, we have done some evaluation of the property to try to identify what we have in the way of buildable land. That changes from time to time as the vegetation changes from time to time. It moves. It's not a static line. Vegetation, it comes and it goes. It's much like a mean high water line. It comes and it goes. We have buildable space on the property per code. We have done various in-house analyses of what we can do on it. Not a lot, obviously, and you can go out there and take a look at it. Portions of the property actually have a parking lot in them, the old residual parking lot. So, I mean, we know that we can, we know that we can fit something in here. We're still refining exactly what that is. The property is not, in our assessment at the moment, unbuildable. And as we move through the development review process with the county, we will show how we think it is buildable and what areas are buildable. And the county will either concur or disagree. And then we'll figure out what we've got. It's not, it's not a slam dunk in any stretch of the imagination. I don't want to portray that it is. But there is, there is, there is room to do something there. We have to just see what we can fit.
The A1A right of way is 100 feet.
Yes.
And if you look at the center line that runs in front of that piece of property and now you go 50 feet to the east, that's where your building could begin. But then you have the additional setback requirement from where that line is. And you're looking at a fairly narrow stricture in that area and it pushes you probably towards the dune preservation zone. I would think your uplands area is probably closer to A1A than it is to the beach. The 3.53 acres, and you're looking for residential high, I believe?
We already have residential high.
15 units to the acre?
Yes.
You would be permitted with the change. The 3.53 reduced, I guess my question to staff is, are you entitled to 15 units per acre dependent on the 3.53, your total survey? Or are you entitled to the 15 against the upland area that's buildable?
I'll let your staff answer that question.
Chair Taylor, Commissioner Munt. The future land use, which is presently, currently the RH with residential high, just for clarification, the applicant's not requesting for that to be amended. The property is already designated as residential high. The rezoning would bring it back down to the residential, Hutchinson Island Residential District, which allows up to 15 units per acre you use the land use designation. However, you would still have to meet the dimensional requirements within the section of the code for the table for 710.
So the dimensional requirements would apply to the upland area where they potentially could build?
That is correct.
All right. So now we've said that we've got the dune preservation zone. We've got some uplands that you can build on. And the upland area that's buildable is subject to the normal regulations that we have in the Land Development Code. So again, all of these are, you know, pulling it down because you've got spacing requirements, you've got retention requirements, you've got parking requirements. Although one of the parking possibilities is parking under the building, which doesn't count against your height. Is that correct? If you have under the building parking, your height measurement starts at the first floor habitable?
My understanding of the way the codes are written, Mr. Munt, is that your building elevation, assumed elevation zero for where you start for flood control, which gets to the question that was raised earlier, begins at the bottom member. If there is space beneath there to park, great. If there isn't, that's my problem to go figure out how I can work within 35 feet and still get a structure that fits there.
Or possibly having to park and lose some space out on the open areas.
Right. It's, following, following the zoning change, this moves into a much more, and you've already hit on a couple of points into it. This moves into a much more complex, mathematic, design exercise where you're looking at going up, going out, going this way, doing everything in between. And it's like the old squishy ball. You squish on one, pops out on one spot and you gotta go back and address all the issues.
I've got a question, staff, the Environmental Resources Department. Are you familiar with the property?
Good evening. Amy Cooper with the Environmental Resources Department. Commissioner Munt, yes, I am.
Roughly how much uplands would you think is on that site?
That is difficult for me to determine that without looking at the survey.
You're an expert, aren't you, Environmental Resources?
No, that's true, but I would feel much more comfortable answering that question once we figure out the dimensions of where the dune preservation zone is present.
Okay. But you do acknowledge that the dune preservation zone is most likely very prevalent on the site?
Yes, I would agree with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any other questions from the board for staff or the applicant at this time? Thank you, Mr. Murphy, and stay close in case we have things we need answered at the end. This is a public hearing. If any members of the public wish to address the board on this item, please come forward. Come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And we will be, we've got a three-minute timer on there, but just try and keep it brief.
Donna Lane, 5047 North Highway A1A, Hutchinson Island, North Hutchinson Island. I have a question. I looked up the development code and as I hear the discussion, it seems that the actual buildable land is fairly small, which means that in order for the developer to get the density, you're looking at more density perhaps going up, perhaps in height. Staff, I believe, said and the developer acknowledged that it's Zone B. So the maximum height provided is 35 feet. But doesn't the code also then add, but it's eligible for a variance up to 71 feet?
Let's, we can, we'll answer the questions at the end of the public hearing. We can...
I'm sorry?
Well, we'll take your questions and then we'll have staff respond at the end, just so we...
Okay.
Move things...
Thank you.
Thank you. Write that down, Jody. Whoever's next, come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Anthony Toriano, 4949 North A1A, outside the 500-foot radius, but still interested. My main concern is that a previous proposal for this property was to put a boutique hotel in and the current zoning would not allow that. And I don't care for that possibility, which is allowed in Paragraph 6 of the HIRD. So we can't hold the property owner or the developer to intent. But based on that previous concept, I didn't like the idea. And I just want to say also, the sign posted on the property did not include the room number for the meeting. There were several people and vehicles milling about the Virginia Avenue side of the building where all the signs clearly say, "Enter by the west side of the building." I don't think all those people that I saw out there made it into this meeting. And I'm not going to say that's a deliberate way to suppress public opinion, but you might want to consider putting the room number on the sign and posting sandwich boards or what have you out so people can find the meeting in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Good suggestion. Anyone else wish to address the board on this item? Okay. Okay. If anyone else wants to speak, if you want to start making your way over so we can get this, get this going. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Diane Leverage, 5264 Inlet Way. Is a zoning change necessarily required to actually determine how much land is actually buildable?
No.
How, I have two more questions. Is that all right? How does changing vegetation change the land, the buildable land area, given the dunes, which are so close to the remaining asphalt left on that property? He's, you said, I don't know where he went. There he is. You mentioned that changing vegetation changes the buildable land and I was confused by that.
Okay. We'll have the applicant address that.
Thank you. My third question was actually, and it sounds like we don't know the answer to this maybe, but how large is the actual buildable area? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, everyone. So I want to say I'm just like Valentina Blagon, 51...
Pull that mic down a little bit.
No.
You pull it down.
Okay, thank you. Now you can hear me, right? Okay. Valentina Blagon, 5151, Ocean Harbor North. So we just moved with my husband a couple of weeks ago, but we are familiar with this area, with the ocean resorts over decade. So we just love it. It's so beautiful. It's so nice. It's just made for, just for Americans. This is what is America about. Because when you come in a country and everybody pursues the happiness, this is the happiness. It's my opinion, I am mother, I am grandmother, and you can't block this beautiful paradise with anything in front. Of course, it's so beautiful to have some nice, rich neighborhood in front of, but not the point. Please, Saint, like, Saint Lucie County of Florida, leave this place alone. This is a treasure. It's a treasure. If even for this piece, for, look at this land, you can just be proud of yourself, say, yes, this is it. How is America acting, like, treating their own people? Because these people, they're passing their houses or condos, most of them, for generation to generation. Am I right? So many people. So just people, like kids, grandkids, grand-grandkids, they're enjoying it. And so like, and the shore actually so not narrow. And the people, they try to keep it clean. Even we were on vacation in here, I just pick up the bag, plastic bag, go to the shore, enjoy it, and pick up some trash. And I was enjoying it because it's so beautiful. You can't, it's just a diamond, it's jewelry. Please, because you have such a powerful, you have a power. I'm not against this person, Mr. Murphy. But it's, it's not the point. Please, leave it alone, guys. And we, everybody, we're under the guard, okay? Because he's watching. Every, everyone, you, me, them. So leave it alone and you will be so pleased and happy with that. And say, yeah, I was, like, I, excuse my language. I'm, my language is not so good because I'm here only for a little bit less than two decades. So, but I'm so happy. I love America. I'm American now. And I'm so happy. I found my love husband and he's watching me smiling. And we have beautiful neighbors. We're just so happy with that. And also, three minutes, yeah, can I have a little bit more? And the question also, we want to know just, okay. We, third floor, now on the corner, now you're gonna block our view. We don't like it. It's not only about that, but it's about the ocean resort and everybody. It's so beautiful. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you for this.
Love you, guys.
Thank you for your trash picking up service. I appreciate that. No harassing, Mr. Murphy. Just kidding. That's our job.
Hello. My name is Roseanne Pontello. My address is 5151 North A1A, Hutchinson Island, 34949. I just want to add to what Valentina said. My family has owned property in Ocean Harbor North for 42 years. I recently moved, two weeks ago, same time that she did, without the knowledge that this was about to happen. We have enjoyed the view, the incredible view, all these many years with my family. I would also prefer to see it stay as pristine as it is. I know that you said that on there there were seven objections, but I'm sure there are many, many more from Ocean Resorts and Ocean Harbor North who would object to this going in. It happens to be September. Most of the winter residents are not down here and cannot attend this meeting right now. I didn't know that a letter of objection could have been submitted. I'm sure there would be many, many more. If the people were able to know that they could have done that, maybe they know, maybe they don't. All I know is I just moved here and I would hate to see my view also taken away. That stretch of land has been preserved for so many years. And like I said, I think there'd be a lot more objections than you're actually going to see or hear tonight. Several of the people I'm sitting in, in the row I'm in, feel the same way. They're just maybe a little bit more shy to come up here and say something. So I would say that you have a larger contingency with questions and/or objections. And please take that into account. I didn't come prepared with any questions. I didn't come prepared to say anything more professional or, you know, logistical. But I do think it does need to be addressed. I know at one time there were actually two restaurants. Everyone keeps mentioning PV Martins. But I have been coming down here long enough to know the previous restaurant was called the Red Tail Hawk. So that'll show you a little bit of the history. Something like that could possibly be acceptable, a restaurant that we could also enjoy. But more residents and more traffic. And if it goes up as a hotel, then now you have transient people constantly coming in and off the island. I don't think that's necessary for that stretch of land. And I think anything that goes there has to also coincide with the wishes of the residents in that immediate area. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board on this item? Last chance. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board if there's further discussion or questions of staff. I know we had a couple of questions that were asked about the code variance of 71 feet. The hotel and the commercial neighborhood are HIRD.
Is the developer here? I want to ask him.
I mean, the applicant is represented, isn't he?
Mr. Chairman, I think this is going to be a bit of a tag team response to some of the questions that came up. I'm somewhat in a unique position in that I know personally how the herd regulations were developed. I was actually here when they were done many, 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 many years ago and lots of hair left, you know, then. And if I... And if I mispronounce anyone's name, or if I screw it up on that part of it, I apologize in advance. Mrs. Lang was asking, is Mrs. Lang, okay, Ling. You were asking a question relative to building height and variances. As we indicated, your staff showed you earlier, we are in Height Zone 35, and our applications do not include any proposed change to that. The reference made about a variance of 71 feet. As I understand the Land Development Code, there, unless it's changed, and I don't think it has, there is a restriction in the Land Development Code that limits any variance, with the exception of a non-conforming lot, that comes before the Board of Adjustment, or what may be, whatever changes in the future, a later agenda item here tonight. You can only get a 20% of whatever the requirement is. If, simple math, if I had a 10-foot setback, or a 10-foot height issue, and I needed to get a variance, the best that I could get was 2 feet. So, that would get me to 12 feet. So, in the case of, and this has happened on several of the projects, in the case of a building height variance from the 35-foot limitation, as applied to other parts of Hutchinson Island in the past, that typically goes from 35 to 42 feet. That's the best you're going to get with a variance. The only other way to get any additional height, and again, we are not proposing any of that, this is more of a certification, would be to change the height zone. And there is no plans to do that on our part. So, hopefully that answers your question, is the best that a variance would get you, and if staff can tell me if I'm going wrong in all of this, let me know, is that extra 7 feet. But, again, that's not what we're here for tonight.
Just to piggyback on that, Jody, if you could just tell us what the process to get a variance is, should that come up in the future?
Look, Mr. Taylor, to obtain a variance, you would be required to do a public hearing, which, again, the 500-foot radius would apply. The notice on the property would, a sign on the property would be required, and a newspaper ad would be required.
Thank you.
Mr. Toronto, I'm sorry? Torina, okay, I'm sorry, forgive me for that. You asked a question relative to the boutique hotel option that was looked at. Yes, there have been explorations of doing a hotel/restaurant, boutique hotel/restaurant on that property. That's not a part of what we're doing tonight. Those plans, from our perspective, from what we're doing on the property, and what we're looking at right now, have been dropped. We're looking at a straight residential use of the property. The, could someone in the future come in and propose? Let's say we sold the property to somebody else, could someone else come in and propose something like that, under the HERD zoning district? Yes. Because if you go back and look at HERD, when HERD was created back in 19, late 80s, it was designed to address specific uses, basically residential and hotel uses. Residential, if you go back through the various permitted conditional accessory and so forth, were listed, permitted uses were residential uses. A hotel use could be allowed only as a conditional use. And that conditional use, as I recall, and staff can confirm, would require a minimum of two public hearings, in addition to full site plan and a whole bunch of other detailed information about that particular use at that particular location, should someone else, not us, someone else propose that in the future. Again, that goes away from the particulars of our zoning petition tonight, but it moves more into application of how these things work in the future. I didn't catch your, your last name. Leverage, okay. You were asking questions about how you determine the building areas, the development areas of the property. Well, as I said, the HERD Zone Zoning District has essentially three development zones, or three use zones. Dune preservation, dune area, beach and dune, uplands, and wetlands. And every one of those is a site-specific assessment that is made when a development application is brought to the county. We will, when we go to make use of the property, we are obligated to go out and provide the county the necessary site surveys that define what's considered beach and dune, what's considered upland, and what's considered wetland. Now, in our particular case, it's going to be easy on the wetland part, I don't have any. But, we will have to come in and designate out what is the beach and dune area, the upland area. And then from that, you go back into the use tables, and we see what we can do. And Mr. Munt is correct, basically you can't build in the beach and dune area, but you can take the density out of that and apply it to the upland area, provided that you can meet all of the other requirements that I've got to go and meet, when it comes to spacing, parking, all of that stuff. It has to get factored into the equation, so that the plan that is ultimately presented to the county for review can be demonstrated as being compliant. Now, what I said about it moving is that a wetland line and a vegetation line, by their very definition, are, there are an organic type line that changes over time. And what was perhaps a boundary line, or a defined area of a wetland, or a dune area 15 years ago, may not be three years from now, simply because things grow. Waters change, tides move. So, you go out, when you're bringing your development plan in, we understand this, we have to go out in and do all of the detailed site assessment to show what in fact we have buildable. And then snapshot at that point in time, and then we figure out where we're going from there. So, hopefully that answers your question as to why I can't tell you precisely, because I don't know the precise answer at this point, without going in and doing that level of detail. But at this particular stage of a zoning petition, all we're doing is lining up the property into a zoning classification that allows me to take that next step of what is a very long trail to go down. The, Mrs., was it Blood, Blood, I'm sorry. I'm going to butcher that name, and then, yeah, the issues about view and that kind of thing, I appreciate, I understand. But it is private property. So, I mean, we do have the ability and the right to use it. We will do our best to try to protect view sheds and work as best we can, but short of the property being acquired by a public entity, something at some point in the future could go on there. And we'll do our best to minimize any particular concerns or impacts to y'all. But, again, short of public preservation, there's really no way to guarantee that in perpetuity. And I do, too, remember it when it was called the Red Tail Hawk. I have been around for quite a few years, so I do remember that. I think in short, hopefully I've answered some of the questions, again, from, again, I'm kind of wearing two hats here. I've got a lot of archival history knowledge, obviously, of the codes from my prior life here. And hopefully I've helped to educate, or at least identify a couple of the issues for your benefit. But, getting back to the main point of why we're here, we have our petition for change of zoning, as we have outlined, and your staff has concurred, it is consistent with your codes, and we would respectfully request that it be forwarded in advance.
A quick question, Mr. Murphy. Is that, this land is at the north end of the island?
Yes.
Of Hutchinson Island, of North Hutchinson Island. Is that oceanfront accretion also as much as you at the south end of the island?
I can't tell you the precise.
I know we've built up a lot. You get it surveyed one year, and you come back five years later, and you've got more land.
Well, all right, the land planner in me now plays coastal dynamic engineer. I think it's a commonly understood practice and principle that when you have a jetty along the United States East Coast, the Atlantic Ocean, and with the natural currents and the other currents and sand drift and all that kind of stuff, if you're on the north side of a jetty, you get accretion, you build up. On your south side, you get erosion. Now, is the rate of accretion that's taking place on our site here, which is about four miles north of the inlet, give or take a little bit, the same rate of accretion that may be taking place down at the area closer to the inlet? Because we have worked on some properties there, and we've seen some changes over the years. Anecdotally, I'm going to say no, but that's me just kind of shooting from the hip. I have no measurements to back that up. But I can tell you that the surveys we've shown, that we've done on the properties in these areas have consistently shown some levels of accretion. Now, is it the same rate? Eh, I don't know. But it doesn't seem to be eroding.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. For the H-I-R-D zoning, could you describe what an elevated walkway would be?
Dune hopper? Dune, a dune walkover?
Okay, well, the question I have here is, if you have a residential high, which is 15 units per acre, would each one of those units be able to construct one of those walkways? Or would there be a common walkway, or how would they access the beach?
That will be a discussion that I have long and hard with Mrs. Cooper over here. It really, I think it's going to depend a great deal on the design of the projects. In my experience, the design of the project that's presented out to y'all. If it's a multifamily, multi-story structure, typically you can channel and funnel things into one, maybe two locations. If you were to do a townhome development, and I'm doing this in abstract discussion, and this is not property specific to ours, but more of an abstract discussion. If it was a townhome development, or a string, single-family development, the initial request is that each individual unit would have either a shared, on a common lot line, or individual one coming out that way. We will have a disagreement with the county on that particular point, because they would like us down to one, but we'll work that out when we get to the development stage.
Thank you.
Mr. Louts?
Ms. Jody, whatever development they decide to do will come back before this board?
Commissioner Louts, it depends on what type of development. If they were doing just a regular, single-family home, that would not come back to this board. If they do multifamily, it possibly would not come back to this board. It would go in as a minor site plan.
Thank you. So, the residents would lose, excuse me, would lose one opportunity to have a voice prior to the commission?
Depending on the number of units that the applicant proposes, there's thresholds of where a minor and a major will take place. If it's a major site plan, it would just be elevated to the Board of County Commissioner for approval.
Can, can we ask that it come back as part of a recommendation?
Commissioner Louts, this would be during a rezoning, we cannot condition the application for any type of future. With a, with a rezoning application or petition, we cannot do any conditions of approval as part of the rezoning. That is a development application process. However, they will have to go through all the requirements, as stated by Mr. Murphy, that they would have to go through the environmental, they would have to go through the Environmental Resources Department, the dune preservations, how much density they would be allowed, they would have to demonstrate. They would still have to go through all the permitting agencies that would regulate this site.
I understand that, but the, the folks in the audience would lose the opportunity to have a voice, again, publicly, before it goes to the county commission. They can't go to the environmental associations and all those follow-ups to get, when it goes through those procedures. These folks wouldn't go to that, they can't go to that. I'm sensitive that they're going to lose the opportunity to have another voice before, excuse me, before it goes to the county commission.
Mr. Louts, Commissioner Louts, unfortunately, without knowing the actual application that the developer is going to propose, that is a question that's very hard to answer at this, at this time.
You did a good job, thank you.
Mr. Bender?
Quick question, so in its current zoning, it's commercial, they could just redo another commercial building there, and it's still kept at 35 feet, and there would be no special hearing or input from the public on that?
Mr. Bender, that is correct. And I just, if you look at your screen, I just put up all the permitted uses that would be allowed in the Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District by rights, as long as they maintain the 35-foot overall height and meet all the other requirements from the other agencies.
So, the height requirement is the same both, both ways, right?
That is correct.
All right, gotcha.
Mr. Munt?
No, he just made the point that I was going to make, that we do have a public hearing and the opportunity to speak about the possibility of a rezone. But, if the owner and his agent had decided that they wanted to stay within the Commercial Neighborhood designation, they didn't have to do any of this. They could have worked up their plans, gone to the Building Department, and as long as everything met within the regulations of the county, all they had to do is pull their building permit, and until there was a sign out on the front of the property, usually it's a little white box, and it's got a permit in it that's about that big, and construction begins without any input from the neighborhood. It was already permitted, as Jody said in CN zoning right there. All of those could have happened without any input, and it could have been occupying every square inch of the uplands to which they're entitled, as long as they met all of the other setbacks and requirements and parking and retention of the rainwater and that sort of a thing. So, the rights that they have, they're giving up this opportunity on CN to potentially develop something in a residential area, rather than a commercial area. So, just think of that when you're thinking long-term, that you're having an opportunity this evening, that had they decided to stay within existing zoning, they didn't have to do any of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Munt. Ditto what you said. I think you summed that up pretty well, for all of us. Any other questions of staff or the applicant from the board at this time? The public hearing has been closed, so we'll entertain a motion, or if there are more discussion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Bender. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bender?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odel?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Slay?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Munt?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Louts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Vice Chair Low?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Taylor?
Yes, ma'am. Eight to one, move for approval. So, this will go, be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for recommendation of approval from us, but you will have another chance to speak your case to the Board of County Commissioners whenever that date comes up. But, I appreciate everybody for being here, and I know this was a touchy subject, but thank you for coming and not yelling at us too much. Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to Item 9C, a county-initiated Land Development Code text amendment. And we have the illustrious Maite Santa Maria.
Madam Chair, Mr.? I have spoken to Maite, speaking, we've met and talked about this.
I know, I heard it.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Maite Santa Maria, Planning Development Services Director, for the record. Tonight I will be presenting Agenda Item 9C pertaining to a Land Development Code Amendment, creating an administrative variance process, as well as providing for a special magistrate to serve as the Board of Adjustment.
I already saw that one.
I apologize for that. This item was publicly noticed, as required by the Land Development Code, on September 1st. And the purpose of this amendment... first, and the purpose of this amendment is to create an administrative variance to streamline the regulatory process for setback variances for single-family dwelling units and residential accessory structures. So, that would include things like pool enclosures and sheds, pool houses, things like that. So, on the slide before you is an excerpt of the Administrative Variance Proposed Code. The administrative variance streamlines the regulatory process for applicants by increasing staff's ability to provide administrative approvals for single-family homeowners to address variance requests of up to thirty-five percent of the minimum front, rear, and side yard setbacks within the agricultural and residential zoning districts. This would, again, would be an administrative variance only for single-family dwelling units and their accessory structures. This would not allow staff to adjust height, frontage, driveway widths, lot coverage, or anything else. This is only for the setbacks. While this new code section addresses variance requests, again, to the front, rear, and side yard setbacks, it still captures the majority of variance requests submitted to the county. On average, I went over about five years of applications. We've received between twelve and fifteen applications total, and about ninety-five percent of them are a setback request, typically like a foot in the backyard for a pool enclosure or something similar. So, with that, this new code section would be similar to the existing administrative variance process that we have today that allows staff to address the, sorry, excuse me, address the yard setbacks for recreational vehicle parks and mobile home parks. Additionally, this new code includes the authority to approve variances of six inches or less without a formal application and notice to existing single-family homes, as this would be a very minor or de minimis request from an applicant. On the screen before you, you can see at the bottom, that is our dimensional standard table from our land development code, and you can see in the yellow columns, I put in what would be the maximum, these are just examples for these zoning categories, the maximum that staff could allow as the thirty-five percent. That doesn't mean necessarily that an applicant would receive that total amount, because there is criteria associated with this process, but I just wanted to give you examples. So, as you can see for, like, on the bottom row, for RS four, front would be up to eight point seven five feet, the rear would be five point two, two-five feet, and for the side, it would be two point six feet essentially. So, the administrative variance process includes specific criteria. It's on the screen before you right now on the top left. It's the letters A through F on the screen, and it includes that an applicant would have to meet all the criteria, which includes demonstrating good and sufficient cause, that the variance would not impair or injure other properties or improvements, that it would be the minimum variance necessary for the reasonable use of that property, that it would not result into any encroachment into environmentally sensitive resources or into any access or utility easement or other common area, and again, it could not exceed that thirty-five percent threshold that would be for staff. Anything above that thirty-five percent threshold would automatically go to the Board of Adjustment. The administrative variance code also includes the requirement to notice all property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property and the posting of a sign, and provides for due process where if we receive written objections to the proposal, then the item would be elevated to a public hearing before the Board of Adjustment. And there's also an appeal process for anybody that is unhappy with a decision that's made that goes to the Board of Adjustment. With that, as I noted previously, the administrative variance process is anticipated to address the majority of the requests that we received today and what we anticipate in the future. Again, we typically only receive twelve to fifteen applications per year total. As such, the proposed code also includes modifying the Board of Adjustment. A special magistrate under this code would serve as the Board of Adjustment to further streamline the overall process. The special magistrate would be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners and serve at their pleasure. That particular individual would have to be a retired Florida judge or a member in good standing with the Florida Bar for a minimum of five years, and it is anticipated with this code change that this Board of Adjustment would meet very infrequently based on the criteria and the authorities that would be provided under the administrative variance process. The county is and has been very fortunate to have appointed residents like yourselves and the members of the Board of Adjustment, willing to serve and to make informed decisions as the Board of Adjustment, but in an effort to streamline the overall review process and be respectful of their time as well as the applicant's, the appointment of the special magistrate will simplify the intermittent scheduling of hearings and streamline the overall process. So, with that, staff finds this petition, petition meets the standards of review set forth in Section eleven point oh-six oh-three of the St. Lucy County Land Development Code and is not in conflict with the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucy County Comprehensive Plan, and staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward this petition to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval, and I'm here to try to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Maite. Are there any questions of staff? Mr. Munt?
Mr. Chair, two questions. You don't have any special land use outlined for the magistrate. Basically, any retired judge or any active member of the Bar for five years could serve in the position, and you haven't identified that they have a specialty in land use. The other question is, the appointment is open-ended and serves at the will of the Board of County Commissioners possibly indefinitely.
Thank you, Commissioner. There is a process that's ongoing right now to do an RFQ, which actually will include criteria for the special magistrate, where they have to have experience in local government law, land use law, ADA law, real estate law, and administrative law, so that'll be part of that requirement, and part of that will be addressing if they've ever served as a special magistrate before, in what jurisdictions have they had any disciplinary actions or been removed from that seat. So, there'll be a variety of criteria that will go into that, that would be reviewed by a selection committee and then recommended to the board, and the board would ultimately make that decision on who to choose and for what time period.
Thank you. And after selection, that party would serve at the pleasure of the board?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Should those requirements be written into the code, you think? I mean, if they do this initial RFQ and then eventually they replace them and they don't do an RFQ, is there anything and they're requiring them to do one?
There is no requirement to do an RFQ, but that is typically the process that we would go through to make that selection. The board could also ask for proposals or letters of interest. My guess is the board would always have some sort of standard of review so that they have somebody that's qualified to do that, to serve in that function. It doesn't necessarily have to be in the code, but we could make that recommendation if you'd like.
Commissioner Munt?
Maite, as you know, I'm chairman of the Board of Adjustment.
Yes, sir.
And I'll be out of a free job.
Yes.
And I think I support this, but I think I need, I'd like to clarify a little bit. And we did have some conversations. What benefits will the people of St. Lucy County get by us changing this process, and what benefits will the county have? I understand, as we talked, that you were, when you came from, and joined St. Lucy County, that you initiated this in the Keys.
Yes, sir.
Can you perhaps tell us a little bit about what happened?
So, yes, so in this review of this process and in reviewing the applications that we receive, the majority of them are for setback variances that are typically small quantities, under three feet, typically one to two feet, usually for a shed or a pool enclosure. So, part of the process is to make it easier where staff can review it, potentially with their building permit or just a site plan or something else, where instead of having to delay the process, apply for a second application, trying to get the quorum and then schedule a public hearing, it could go through a quicker process for the applicant so that they can save time and money. Our goal is to propose a fee resolution update as well, to provide a lower fee for the administrative variance, so that it'll be more cost-effective for that individual. So, our overall goal is to save time for that applicant and save them money. And anything that would be more contentious or larger in scale or something separate from setbacks, so again, height, anything else, would automatically go to that Board of Adjustment.
Sorry about my phone. I shut it off. Another question. The members that have been on this board for a long time, would they have any opportunity to serve on another board?
That will be the decision of the Board of County Commissioners. I have expressed that they have interest in, you know, sitting on boards, but ultimately that is their call.
So, what you just said, the board will still exist?
The board will still exist. Instead of five people sitting in the seat, there would be one individual as a special magistrate serving the same function.
You said if it turns out to be, like, extra contentious, it would go to the board?
Correct, which would still be the special magistrate.
Oh, okay.
All five board members would be gone.
So, what is the difference between the special magistrate dealing with single-family residential minor variances and the special magistrate dealing with more contentious issues?
So, what our thought is, because we have this new criteria for the administrative variance, that staff would do that administratively. Unless there was objections from ten percent or more of the surrounding property owners, it would never get to the special magistrate. And in most cases, they are not contentious items. It's typically like a foot on the side yard to put my pool enclosure. I already have my pool, I just want to now screen it.
Okay, so you're saying that these minor variances for single-family residential only will be handled by staff, won't involve the special magistrate or the current Board of Adjustment?
Yes, ma'am.
And if it is more complex than that, if it's anything other than single-family residential, if it's single-family residential but more contentious, then it goes to a special magistrate, one person making the decision with some solid legal background for making said decision, but one person and one perspective only? And would that be a public hearing?
That would be a public hearing, and it would be one individual, again, a retired judge or an attorney with legal background, but they would have input, input from the public.
If we find this one person with one perspective to be rather slanted in one direction or another, and there are issues with it, how would the public have input in changing who the special magistrate is if there is a problem or if they are no longer serving in a functional way?
Coming to the county and speaking to the county attorney as well as their Board of County Commissioners, expressing their thoughts so that those Board, the Board of County Commissioners can make a different decision.
Mr. Munt?
That brings up an interesting point. Can the Board of County Commissioners override the special magistrate's decision?
No, sir. So, the appeal of the special magistrate would go to circuit court.
So, there is an appeal process to the special magistrate's decision?
Yes.
Thank you.
And currently, our Board of Adjustments can be appealed by the county commissioners? Or?
No, it would be the same process. It would go to circuit court.
Yeah, I see the value in it, but I also see the value in having a couple of laymen's up here, you know, looking at, you know, we're not lawyers. We don't see everything as black and white as some things should be, so I see it. But I like that it's still a public hearing and you can still, you know, plead your case, and so it's still a similar process. Mr. Bender?
So, the staff doing the ten percent below is for speed. The magistrate, is that for speed as well?
It is for speed in terms of scheduling and having somebody on call all the time. Staff could do thirty-five percent or less. Anything above that would be the special magistrate, and it's just easier to have somebody there set on the schedule, one individual to schedule that hearing very quickly.
And you said it was fifteen of the last five years, like, does that fifteen per month or fifteen total?
Total for the year.
So, the Board of Adjustment right now only seen fifteen things in the last five years?
I think this year it's even less. It's on average, it's about twelve to fifteen total applications.
Per year?
Per year. The board meets most of the year, I think at least three months are typically canceled because we don't have anything at all, and they typically have one to two items at the most on their agenda.
The, when it goes to, when the magistrate's meeting and it's a public hearing, is there still, like, a two-week notice before that? Okay.
Yes, there will still be a public notice. There will still be sent notices to the surrounding property owners. It will still be posted on the property.
Cool. Mr. Slack?
There was also a comment in there about the special magistrate taking over for the county code enforcement board. Could you expound on that a little bit?
Correct. That is just a placeholder there today as an option in the future to use a special magistrate if needed for the code enforcement. It would only be for the land development code items, not for the code of ordinances, and it would have to be at the discretion of the board, obviously allowing that to occur. But there is no intention of using it at this moment.
Mr. Louts?
Madam Counselor, are you down there somewhere?
She's asleep.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to seem as an insult to your fantastic occupation. However, there is a degree of, to me, positive validity to having a group of laypeople looking at laypeople to make a decision, other than some Yale graduate that doesn't know the difference between bear poop and spring honey at times, or have enough common sense to know the difference. I think boards like this one has the opportunity to look at things in seven, eight, nine different views, and we have the opportunity to present those views amongst ourselves and to you, the administration. And I think there's a great deal of validity to that, other than having a legal person do that outside of, God, I'm getting myself in trouble, common sense approach. Madam Lawyer, I don't mean to insult you.
Completely understand, sir. No problem.
Ma'am, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Low, how many people sit on your board?
Five.
And you meet once a month?
Nope.
Not all the time. I don't think we've had, we've missed two meetings this year so far.
I believe it's two.
Yeah.
So, we're doing away with that board and putting it in charge of one person?
But may I say one other thing, though? Believe it or not, with five people on that board, we have a hard time sometimes getting a quorum.
Then you need to pick more people for the board that are active.
Or show up on time.
Well, the county commissioners appoint them.
Well, there's your problems, Courtney.
I think it's a great idea. Streamline the process, take out all the bullshit. Sorry.
I really think it would speed up the process for the people that are applying. It will definitely speed that up. It will save the money for them, for hiring lawyers to come in, and if the county can resolve it without it going to the special magistrate, their permitting time will speed up.
That is our goal, absolutely.
What was in your experience in the South?
It saved an applicant a couple of months in terms of trying to schedule a hearing and everything else with the change.
And cost and publishing. And then the people come, I had a hard time, sometimes they come in, they had, something happened, I mean, I don't think I showed up one time in the last five years, but anyway, and it happens, things do happen, but if people have, they hire an attorney, they come in and we can't hold a meeting, it's just a shame. So, I think I would support this.
Mr. Bender?
If you do the thirty-five percent thing, how many fewer public hearings would there had to have been if you look back over the last five years?
From looking at the files that have gone through, probably two, maybe three in total for the year.
So, I get the thirty-five percent for speed, but especially one person making the bigger, more contentious decisions isn't necessarily a speed issue unless you're dealing with people not showing up. But if they only need to show up once or twice a year, because you took a lot of the kind of pointless workload off, is there a way to do this, still keep the board for those one or twos? More content, because if it's more contentious and this is a legal decision, you got to appeal in this, at the courts, I mean, I would feel more comfortable. I like the idea of having more input on the more contentious stuff than just one person and to do it, and if they have to wait two meetings for it, so be it. I mean, there's simple stuff that we don't see at planning and zoning. We only see the conditional use stuff and more difficult stuff, so I get the So I get the, I like the speed of the 35%, because that is usually all the dumb stuff. But I don't know if I like consolidating power into one person that could be on there for 20 years and pick a fight with somebody because they don't like something and, you know, not have variances going through because of it and be in such a stagnant position. It's just my two cents on it.
Commissioner Slack?
So I agree with you in a lot of respects. I think as a board, we tend to be slanted in support of this group with all these diverse backgrounds coming from different points of view. And sometimes one thing strings along to another idea and between the whole group of us, we uncover a lot of really interesting angles. I think that's really beneficial. With your smaller board and this issue of meeting quorum, either find more active members or perhaps find an alternate or two that could fill in when you have a quorum issue that you can see coming up so that we don't cause any delays. And then we could still use a standing layperson voluntary Board of Adjustment. I would not support using a magistrate for the complicated projects, for the more contentious things, nor for the code enforcement board. I would, if, I do support the administration paring down the caseload. I think you guys can handle all of those minor adjustments with all due haste and just get them off the list. That would be fantastic. But I would not, I would not support doing away with the voluntary Board of Adjustment for those contentious projects. I'd like to see it streamlined, come up with this way to keep the quorum. But if we had to do a magistrate, I would certainly support a regular reevaluation of who the appointee is and a term limitation of no more than two terms in a row, whatever number of years we determine seems to make the most sense.
How do we just merge the value adjustment board into this board? We meet monthly, regularly.
That is a possibility. If you would like to make that recommendation, we can make that recommendation to the board as your suggestion.
Over 35% variance has just come before us.
I'm better off.
That would make sense. I just don't, the whole single-person consolidation thing, I don't know. I don't like that. It just makes it easy.
Commissioner Louts?
If I come before this magistrate and for some odd reason I have a conflict of interest with him or personality conflicts, I'm screwed.
You'd have to go to circuit court if you can't.
I'd imagine there's some type of.
You know what that takes?
Legal conflicts, that would be addressed.
I'm in money and may never have.
Through the court.
I can have a disagreement with a person. Bo and I may not get along together if I come before this board, but I've got six or eight other chances of still persuasion that will work for it. I, I, I'm leery of putting all my eggs in one basket.
I'm just like, these are variances. This isn't that huge of a deal in a lot of those. So, you know, most of this stuff can be handled by staff. If there's anything over, where's it going?
I'd rather give, I'd rather give staff more leeway to let them handle minor issues so that they can get that through the system and we don't have people waiting six months for an variance and go ahead and do what they got to do than bringing it into one person under control. I got faith in you and those boys and men back there in the back. I got all the faith in the world that you can make the right decision. Because if you don't, you still got to go before the county commission. And that's our last resort. In this case, we don't have one. May have worked in Monroe, but it may not work here.
Okay. Commissioner Munt?
Has Mr. McIntyre bought into this?
I haven't really briefed him for buying in. I have, he is aware of the change. I have spoken to all the county attorneys and I've spoken to all the Board of County Commissioners and received the approval to move forward with advertising this and going through the process.
Do we plan to get an opinion from the county attorney on something that's legal?
Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri, this ordinance has been reviewed by the county attorney's office. And again, like she said, received the approval to go forward.
You're not issuing an opinion?
On the legality of the ordinance, sir.
Not the legality, but the formation of it. Did you have some input of, you know?
Yes, sir, our office did.
Okay, substantial input?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So basically, the document and what we're looking at has been reviewed by you and has your tacit approval put at that?
Our office, yes, sir. Various different county attorney, assistant county attorneys have been involved.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Better?
Is this going to set precedent for other boards to be replaced with a special magistrate? Because you already said that this is about variances, but you also said it gives you the option now for code enforcement. Are we going to start just replacing boards with special magistrates?
Not necessarily. Again, it will be a Board of County Commissioner decision, but there has been no intention or discussion that I know of for anything else.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? I'll open the public hearing if there's any member of the public wish to address the board. I only see two of you, no comments. Okay. Everybody else is staff. Okay. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. If we can narrow down our discussion here and go for a motion.
I'd be cool with the 30, the 35%, but I don't like the special magistrate. They can do the 35 for staff approval, but I don't like narrowing it down to one person. I think they should still keep the board. If they want to do virtual, let them zoom in, you know, like we did during COVID. Help if they have problems with quorum, like figure that out. But I don't believe.
And just to clarify, I apologize, Commissioner, they cannot zoom in, so we're, they have to be physically present for a quorum.
Okay. How do we get around that then with COVID?
There was an executive order by the governor that allowed that exception, that that no longer exists today.
So then, whatever the solution is to fix quorum, they need to fix it on the board, but I just don't like one person having, I mean, the whole point of like local government is your local people are up here as represent, like, you know, looking out, so. Not a judge. I mean, it could be a judge from South Dakota or somebody from Orange County, California, and that's the one making decisions. I mean, like I said, I'm not, I don't know like in-depth what the Board of Adjustment decisions are, but still, I just don't.
Well, it has to be a retired Florida judge or a current member of the Florida Bar.
Correct.
Right, so it would be.
So they could just get their Florida Bar license, though?
Yeah, for five years.
Yes.
So is that a motion? Commissioner Louts?
I have one more question. If, how does this speed up the process? Would this magistrate meet anytime there is a request, Monday through Friday, or is he meet once a month as the board now meets?
So assuming that there would be the need for the special magistrate, it would stay on the same schedule of once a month as the same Board of Adjustment does now. And if it's needed, we'd call them, that person up to sit as that board and present, you know, the applicant would present their case at that time.
How does this process then speed up the process?
So our goal is ultimately that we have little to no items going to the special magistrate. Our goal is to have the administrative variance process to cover 99% of the situations.
You and staff?
Yes, staff.
I don't have a problem with that.
If there is the need for a special magistrate, we'd be able to call the one individual that's on call in a contract with the county to schedule something very quickly so that we can move that applicant forward.
Other than the one meeting a month?
No, just the one meeting a month unless there's a special circumstance that calls for another special meeting, if there's an appeal or something like that.
If you and these wonderful people in the back can't resolve the issue with the applicant, then you call the magistrate for a meeting?
Yes, sir.
Once a month?
Once a month.
That has not speeded up the process.
Sure does.
We would be keeping the same once a month schedule that's required by code. We did not change that particular piece, but there is the ability to call special meetings if needed. Again, I don't anticipate that, but there is the ability to call, to call a special meeting.
That you can't call now with the Board of Adjustment?
You can call, but it's very difficult with that particular board.
But wouldn't a special meeting have to be noticed?
Every meeting would have to be noticed, yes.
Okay, so either way, you're looking at a minimum of two weeks.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the difference schedule-wise is nil?
It's nil in terms of that piece. It's hard for us.
As long as we solve the quorum issue.
It's hard for us with the particular Board of Adjustment that we have today. As Chair Lowe mentioned, for the Board of Adjustment, it's very difficult for us to get a quorum. We call and contact consistently throughout the month just to guarantee that we have a quorum for that month. And even on that, even with all that work, sometimes we do not have that and we have to cancel it the day of. And we've had applicants driving up from Fort Lauderdale and other places to hear their case and we've had to unfortunately postpone things and cancel things.
Well, who are these bums? Can we get a list of names here? Show it up.
On a related note, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but what if we were to offer that our planning and zoning commissioners could be the alternates?
Well, that's what we were saying, like why not just bring it in front of us?
I was suggesting just merging the board and we become the value adjustment board.
Do the 35 and then just move, if we have to have a hearing, just use us. I mean, we already got the chair on the committee right now.
Are you passing a motion? Is that a motion, sir? I'm not making a motion. I'm the chair.
I'll motion.
I'll motion that. Eliminate the adjustment board and bring it to us.
What are your thoughts on that, Myte?
That's fine. I mean, that's a good recommendation. We are familiar with this board. This board typically does not have a quorum issue. You meet monthly, so if that would, if you'd like that to be your recommendation, we can recommend that as well.
Feels like a compromise.
And you can blend it right into what we're already doing.
So it would be two different hearings, because you'd be hearing things as the planning and zoning commission and then you would be hearing things as the Board of Adjustment.
So we do two meetings same night, kind of?
It would probably be the same night or, I don't know if we'd schedule it for a different night, but you might have very lengthy meetings.
Please, compress it. Give us a little bathroom break in the middle.
Well, she said it's only going to be like one or two after this 35%.
Right, right, but the one could be kind of contentious and have a lot of public input.
Yes, sir.
That's not going to speed up your process, because you're going to be then taking away what we're trying to do, what you're trying to do. You're trying to be able to prove this stuff to begin with. All these people don't have to come to these boards.
So I wasn't sure if Commissioner Slay was stating maintain the administrative variance, but anything that needed to go to the Board of Adjustment would be the planning and zoning commission, sitting up.
That's what I was.
So I think he's accommodating both.
So we're still a board. There's still a board they can go to, but they handle all the other stuff. We're just taking, we are taking the place of the adjustment.
And you said in the last five years.
Mr. Lowe could preside over that board and swap with Mr. Taylor.
Sure.
State chair there. They do it at the county commission between this and that and the other boards.
I personally don't have an issue either way.
You said the, in the last five years, maybe two to three items would have come to the board with the variance in place?
If the administrative variance process was in place, then yes.
Two to three in the last five years?
Yes.
Okay.
Each year.
Oh, two to three each year?
Yes.
But there was 91% of the things that came before our board in the last five years were just variances.
That is correct. So most of the items that went before the Board of Adjustment were just setback variances, typically for very small quantities.
We're cutting down the 15 items that the board had this year down to two with the administrative variance.
And I am speaking from past applications. Obviously, I never know what's going to happen in the future, but if the trend continues, that is correct.
Okay. I'm not sure if we have a, Commissioner Munt?
Has anybody looked at the budget? Do you, did they estimate what this would cost annually to have a special magistrate?
So we, again, are doing the RFP process. There is no contract in place and that hasn't gone through the full, you know, iteration yet. There would be a negotiated contract with the special magistrate at a whatever hourly rate. And again, we're anticipating just a handful of meetings.
I don't know an attorney that gets less than $300 an hour for starters.
I can tell you in some of the other attorneys that represent our other boards, it's not that amount. It's less than that, so we did not anticipate a very hefty fee associated with it.
Frank, it's certainly going to be more than they pay us.
Yeah, can we add in, we'll replace the magistrate, but we get paid for it?
Call one of us.
Split nine ways.
They could just pick one of us.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, to call a question.
What's the motion?
Make one, Mr. Lowe.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass it the way it is right now, what she's asking for.
With the magistrate?
Yes. And then you can.
A second.
Okay, you have a motion in a second. Any discussion? So this is passing as is, what we have written in here. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Benner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Louts?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Slack?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Munt?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Lowe?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor?
No, ma'am.
What was that count, I wasn't counting.
Five to three.